Evening and welcome to the August 16, 2021 School Committee Meeting. We are in attendance with the exception of Jay Samaha. Tracy, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening. The next item of business is public comment. For those who are here to make public comment, we're going to open that up at this point, but then we're also going to provide another opportunity after the update is given from Dr. Brand. So I just wanted you to know if you don't make your comment now and you would like to wait until after the update, that's fine. If you would like to do it right now, then I will have you get started. All right. Who's up? So please state your name and address. You're going to come right down here. You'll state your...
Let me just open my... Over here, please.
Hello.
Hi, Doreen. We're just getting started with public comment. Thank you. All right. You'll state your name and address for the record, and then there is a three-minute limit.
Yes. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. My name is Jeff Cohen, and I'm here. I'll make the initial, the opening line. We at the Wilmington Town Committee... Excuse me. We at the Wilmington Republican Town Committee submit the following public comment. When the COVID-19 virus appeared in early 2020, it had an unknown trajectory as little was known about it. CDC and NIH used their position of power and influence to influence Americans and set a single narrative on how we should deal with the emerging threat. There were many mistakes made. I'm here to talk about the effectiveness of masks and why the mandates must end. The effectiveness of a mask is dependent on what it's filtering. COVID-19 is very small, and aerosolized particles can easily pass through and around the masks like the ones we are forced to wear. And by the way, they're not for medical use. Viruses easily pass through masks because they are far less than one micron. An NIH study on mask effectiveness, including N95, indicated that they, quote, "could not completely block the transmission of virus droplets slash aerosols even when sealed." COVID-19 viruses, vaccines have been available for some time, and those individuals who either want to take it or were first forced to take it have already done so. The CDC director recently admitted that vaccines no longer prevent virus spread. CDC even admitted 15 months ago that evidence from 14 randomized controlled mask trials of the... Excuse me. Quote, "Evidence from 14 randomized controlled mask trials of these measures did not support a substantial effect on transmission." Extended mask wearing causes oxygen deficiency, which can lead to headaches, drowsiness, dizziness, inability to concentrate, and reduction in cognitive function. CO2 levels in the recent JAMA report indicated that CO2 levels in children was over 13,000 parts per million in the inhaled air of children wearing masks, which is 30 times above the level of air and six times more than the unsafe threshold. These occur just three minutes after mask placement. Psychological impacts can be equally devastating. Children rely heavily on visual cues to create social bonds to assess their personal space. Children with special needs are especially susceptible because they require seeing facial expressions for ongoing development. These cues allow children to assume, assess trust, provide empathy, and improve social interactions, to name just a few. Face masks... I'm sorry. Okay. Face masks prevent these essential cues and are the cause of skyrocketing depression and many other mental illnesses. Masks don't work, and vaccines don't prevent virus spread. Children are extremely unlikely to experience serious symptoms with near zero mortality, 99.9997 survival. Individuals who contracted the virus have long-lasting immunity, unlike those who received the vaccine. We know children are at very low risk of serious illness. The high-risk individuals should have already received the vaccine, and there is physical and psychological damage being done to students. So why are mask mandates there? Why are there mask mandates when they're dangerous to children? It's time to end all mask mandates as they're not based on science. If we had a free flow of information without censorship from Big Tech, which they have admitted to, we would have all the science we need to debunk the theory that masks prevent virus spread during a pandemic. End this ridiculous mask mandate, including athletics, immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. All right. So I also have on my list Angela... Sorry. Can you say your name for me?
I'm Sarah.
Thank you. Sixth Summer Street.
Good evening, everyone. As school districts are requiring young, healthy children to wear face masks for prolonged periods of time, where is the evidence that these masks are effective? And more importantly, the evidence that these masks do no harm to children? Where is the scientific research on safety and effectiveness of healthy children wearing face masks for prolonged periods of time? What are the short-term effects? What are the long-term effects? Are face masks even effective at reducing spread of viral infections? Making our healthy young children wear face masks for five hours a day when there is no evidence or scientific research that children pose any kind of threat is pure child abuse. You are immunocompromising our healthy children by forcing them to wear a mask. These are our healthy children, and parents, as parents, we should choose what's best for our healthy children. You don't have the best interest for our kids. You have the best interest in the system and political gains. You threaten to put my child on disability because she had anxiety while wearing a mask. Are we in Auschwitz? That our children have to line up six feet apart masked once it's just to show that there is not a pandemic? Can you... What you're doing is fascism, and we will not stand for it. To do this to our beloved children...
Have left, become friends.
You will not tell me what to do with my child. I'm sure all of you are vaccinated, then why the mask? Wasn't the purpose of the vaccine to get rid of the mask? What happened? Vaccine not working? If we all have death breath and we are covering our faces with masks, why aren't there biohazard disposals, containers everywhere in public to dispose of these contaminated masks? If the mask captures the virus, it is released and set free to harm again as soon as you throw your mask in a non-bio container or on the ground where they most of them end up. It is a threat, and it is real responsive, and the response is flawed because you dropped the ball last year by not demanding proper disposal of the mask. This experiment, children have been forced to participate without their consent, may cause irreparable harm and potentially very dangerous in essence. Children are required to wear a medical device for hours at a time, five out of seven days a week, both indoors and outside, even while participating in physical activity, without due diligence of a single scientific study to determine if it is safe for children to wear surgical cloth face masks. Until there are scientific evidence demonstrating wearing a cloth face mask for extended periods of time causes no harm, wearing a face mask should be left up to their parents, especially not required mandated for children.
Thank you. Mr. Biggins? Do you want to make your comment now or after?
Do I have time now?
No, of course. Yeah. That's your choice.
So as you all know, Charlie Baker is still no on mask mandates. If you are going by the CDC guidelines, the CDC is not elected by us. You, the board, on the other hand, you are elected by us. A recommendation is not a mandate. I have two children, I have three children, who have underlying health conditions, and it makes it very difficult for them all to breathe wearing masks. It is my choice as a parent whether or whether or not my child wears a mask, not yours. My decision. There is no sign... There is more science showing negative effects from children wearing the mask over a long period of time than the other way around. If you just take time and read this box right here, you will see, right here on the box, under the uses effectively... You will see under the uses that effectively protects from pollen and dust, not a virus. Then if you read the fine print in the box indicating, warning, it states, "Mask can filter certain contaminants but do not eliminate the risk of illness or infection." Bottom line, these are dust masks. That's all they are, dust masks. They don't prevent from a virus. They don't prevent from COVID. They're a dust mask. That's it. And the fact that the seven of the board members are going to dictate to us as parents what is right and what is wrong for our children, it's not up to you. It's not. It's up to us as the parents. So we elect you. We put you in these seats to make the right decisions for us, for our children, and we're sitting... We should not have to... You have 24 meetings a year. One meeting a year that parents can have an open Q and A, and that's it. But before that, you regulate, you mandate, you come up with everything you want, and then when it's time for us to speak, it's already too late. You've already decided what you've all wanted to do. We've gotten to the point now, we're not going to take it. We're pissed, and it's just going to become more and more and more parents at every single meeting, and we're not going to take it anymore. You are not the parents of our children. We can make our decisions for our children. The CDC is a guideline. Bottom line, they're a guideline. That's it. We don't hire them. We don't employ them. We hire you. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, we pay you. And we can go against our Constitution, in the Bill of Rights. Everything is right here in the Constitution and in our Bill of Rights. So if you want to go against our Constitution and our Bill of Rights, then we'll have to go further on that.
Thank you, Mr. Biggins. The last person who signed up to make a comment was Warren Stevenson. Do you want to go now? Okay. Thank you.
My name is Warren Stevenson. My son is about to enter kindergarten, and we are excited about entering the Wilmington School System. My son is a fun, healthy five-year-old boy. He plays soccer, runs the length of the field back and forth. However, for whatever reason, when he catches colds, it settles in his lungs. Three times in his five-year life, he has gone to urgent care or the emergency room for trouble breathing. After the first visit, we were sent home with a nebulizer. In 2019, he caught a cold, and it was clear his breathing was labored. We gave him two doses of his nebulizer, but that night, as he laid on me while I rocked him in his rocking chair, I felt his chest heaving in about an inch. I was scared, and immediately called the doctors to take him to the ER at Winchester Hospital.
There, they confirmed his low oxygen level and gave him a cocktail of medicines and
steroids and a nebulizer that he had to breathe in for an hour and then be monitored for two hours. The nurses were so nice, and he got to sit in a hospital bed, so he kind of liked it. But there was a few times when I looked at him, my little three-year-old, almost four-year-old, in that little hospital gown, nebulizer over his mouth and nose, sounding like Darth Vader, and I thought about how I could not bear to lose him. Now, just months after this, in 2019, of course, COVID emerged and struck a full force here in Massachusetts in March of 2020. As I learned that COVID is a virus that often settles in your lungs and could put healthy people on ventilators, I was terrified for my son. But I also knew that life had to continue, and I needed to go to work. I teach world history and AP US Government at Lunenburg High School. As September of 2020 rolled around, I grew anxious, not for myself, but my fear of bringing the virus home to my son or his catching into daycare. Last school year was truly unprecedented, but Lunenburg was open four days a week from September to April, and then five days a week from April to June. At Lunenburg, all teachers and all students wore masks, K through 12, and we remained open all school year. My son wears the mask every day at preschool. My wife, son, and I have been fortunate to avoid COVID so far due to our caution and policies that schools have put in place, like wearing masks. Masking cannot be a personal choice because though wearing a mask does provide some protection from breathing in the virus, their greatest efficacy is preventing respiratory droplets carrying the virus from spreading through the air. So we need all students to wear masks to protect them all. The Delta variant is now as contagious as chickenpox, with one person likely to infect five to nine people. Meanwhile, no one under the age of 12 is even eligible for the vaccine yet. Their only protection will be masks. The American Academy of Pediatrics and the CDC have both issued guidelines calling for all unvaccinated people over the age of two to wear masks while indoors. I ask that you provide the protection that our students need to be as safe as they can, and my son, I have no doubt, will thrive in the Wilmington School System. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. There are some additional written public comments in our packet that you have reviewed prior to this meeting. And that brings us to item four, which is the school opening fall 21 update. Dr. Brand.
Thank you very much, and good evening, everyone. This presentation is included in the packet, and for those members of the community who may be watching at home or who view this afterwards, if you are interested, you can find this information that I'll go through, included in the packet for this evening. There are really two pieces to this presentation tonight. The first is just to provide the committee as well as our community with a general update in terms of where we stand right now as we prepare for the fall 2021 update and reopening of school. And then secondly, included under old business is that of the mask and face cover, covering policy. So first off, in terms of an update of where we stand right now, taking a little bit of a view in the rearview mirror. Back in May, the Department of Education, or DESI, as I think so many know, we utilize that acronym, released a document that provided updates to school districts through ed schools systems throughout the state regarding COVID-19. And there were really two components or facets of their guidance at that point in time in the latter part of May. First off, all school districts, as they're planning for this upcoming school year, are required to provide in-person, full-time, five-day-a-week instruction in the fall. We've had many members of the community, or numerous of the community have reached out and inquired about the possibility of remote instruction, as was the case last year. That is no longer an option at the present time under the regulations for the Department of Education, so I wanted to point that out. And secondly, at that point in time, DESI has, in that guidance released, lifted, and that's their term, all health and safety requirements. That was at the end of May. However, since the end of May, there have, as I think many are aware, been a number of developments that have taken place, both in the local as well as the national level. And really, this, in my opinion, is what's led to where we find ourselves, along with most other districts in the area right now, in terms of confusion around contradictory messages or information around school operations. DESI released an update at the end of July, which was a shift from the end of May in that guidance that I just spoke about, which at that point, and currently to this point in time, strongly recommends that all students in the kindergarten of sixth grade and all unvaccinated staff and students in grades seven and above wear masks when indoors. So that was the change or development in DESI's specific directions for school districts.
Does recommend...
The American Academy of Pediatrics... The American Academy of Pediatrics and the Center for Disease Control released updated guidance throughout the course of the summer, which calls for all individuals aged two and up to wear masks indoors regardless of vaccination status. Unlike the spring and fall of a year ago, as we sat here, there was a stronger coordination, I would suggest, around all of the various agencies, including the Department of Ed, which really accounted for more or less being on the same page in terms of school operations. That's not the case right now, and again, leading to, I think, the place and time of where we find ourselves. Where we are at right now is a district, knowing that we're still a couple of weeks out from the opening of school, but obviously lots of work is underway. The situation right now, I think, would be appropriate to characterize it as fluid, and so we are obviously monitoring but also planning at the same time for where we're headed. We know very clearly that we'll be offering five-day-a-week instruction, as mentioned earlier. That's a given, and we are doing nothing but planning for that as reopening. But we also obviously are trying to address, in the best way that we can, our health and safety guidance that the state has issued and the other agencies have issued, knowing that this could change in the next day or two, next week for that matter, let alone a couple of weeks out. But we are also trying to balance with all of our planning, welcoming back 100% of our students and staff, while also doing what we think is most necessary to try and prioritize health, safety, and well-being. We are meeting in a couple of days with the leadership team, our school nurses, the WTA, to review our protocols that were in place last school year and to dig deeper in terms of what it is that we think is still necessary to have in place, what things that we can modify or amend or change. And most certainly, once we finalize those decisions, we'll be sure, I'll be sure to be communicating those to the community. For, again, a view to the fall, as mentioned, where our requirement to provide instruction in that instructional model, there is only one model to provide, and so that is far easier than was the case last year for sure in terms of our planning and those of our neighboring districts everywhere. All staff are back full-time, and we are planning schedules to return to pre-pandemic time. I think that's an important piece to point out. We are absolutely planning to strive to, to the greatest extent possible, offer all of our regular programs, our services, extracurricular offerings. At this point in time, and athletics hasn't been called out there, but it's part of the extracurricular offerings, I don't see any reason, unless there's further guidance, that becomes something stronger to push us in one direction, where we can't offer everything pre-pandemic, albeit with some health and safety adjustments. But it's also possible that we may explore some things virtually to some extent or another. That won't be the primary mode of delivery or the first thing that comes to mind, but I think we all realize that there are some benefits in terms of ease of access and making opportunities for some members of our community easier to follow and to participate in, and so we'll explore those where and when we can. There are a number of prevention strategies that the CDC has become, has been very clear on, and that they believe that institutions, not just schools for that matter, but institutions can really help to try and contend with COVID-19. They're listed in the order in which CDC has listed them, and so I just point that out. I won't cover all of them in great detail, but there, this really falls under what they term the multi-layered approach, and it includes, in the order that they've cited, as you can see, vaccinations, mask wearing, physical distancing, screening and testing, ventilation, hand washing, respiratory etiquette, certainly staying home when sick, contact tracing, and cleaning and disinfecting. And again, just in the interest of time, I won't go deeper, but I'm continuing to be very pleased and proud to say that as a school district, we really had all of those in place, with the exception of testing, which we did explore and consider, but, and certainly is important, as CDC underscores. Physical distancing, the CDC or Center for Disease Control recommends a minimum of three feet distance between students where possible who are vaccinated, combined with indoor mask wearing when that's not possible. We are hoping to return to more normal classroom configurations as we open school. You know that that was a big point of our and other district struggles in terms of that six-foot versus three-feet distance, but we certainly are looking to try and return to the greatest extent we can to more normal configurations. We are going to seek to maximize distance between students in our classroom, but I do think it's important for the community to point out, at this point in time, we don't plan to adhere to an absolute minimum. That minimum last year, as you know, was really front and center with the physical distancing guidelines, but that was a very different situation as well, when we had hybrid modes of instruction and half the population in place. We are bringing back everybody, as you know. Contact tracing is still something that we are literally learning more about with new information that has been pushed out to districts by the Department of Education and the Department of Public Health, so we have more work to get up to speed in terms of how or if in what way that has changed since last school year. COVID-19 testing, DESI is strongly encouraging school districts and schools to put into place testing for COVID-19, and there's been quite a bit of information that has been released.
I'm sorry. You can't...
You can't...
You're disrupting a public meeting, ma'am. You're disrupting a public meeting. You're disrupting a public meeting. We're trying to conduct business here.
So we are public, and we are parents.
You are public, but you don't have the right to speak.
I do have a right.
You do not. Not at this meeting.
What else I don't have a right?
You do not at this meeting.
I don't have a right to parent my child, baby. You should parent my child, tell me. Should they put Mando...
I'd refer to Mando recess and see if we can get WPD to...
Okay.
Doctor Mando. It's not worth it to...
I'll just ask you all to be silent, give a warning, and the people will be removed from the meeting if they don't...
So this is the meeting of the school committee. This is not an open forum, as I've stated in the past. We do need...
It never is. It never is.
We do need people to remain silent.
What if it was just you?
And if they don't remain silent, we will ask them to be removed from the meeting. So, thank you. Please continue.
In terms of lunch, just to comment briefly on this, obviously, this was a very big focal point of schools' planning last year. We had, as you know, less than 100% of students until the spring when we reopened, and we obviously, it was a strain to appropriately house with physical distancing our students, and that is why we took on other areas of our schools. But with all students coming back, 100% of our students, it is something that we are cognizant of in terms of thinking about how to plan for, and as mentioned, we will try and maximize the space in lunchrooms when students are unmasked, but it absolutely is going to be a challenge for us. We are going to strive to come as close to three-feet distance as possible to maximize that physical distance between students. Transportation, regular transportation of our buses will absolutely resume. It is an important piece, though, to point out that there is a federal public health order in place. Again, I'll underscore that, a federal health public order in place. All students and staff are required to wear masks on school buses at this time, and so I do think that that's an important piece to point attention to. We are anticipating by August the 24th that information around our bus routes will be pushed out and available on the district website. Briefly on athletics, there is no indication at this point in time, in terms of mask mandates for sports, at this point in time. However, to draw your attention to activity that is taking place this week with the MIAA and their Board of Directors that are scheduled to meet, the middle school athletic directors will also be meeting and carefully monitoring any information that comes out of that meeting that I just mentioned. MIAA right now has adopted the position that until or unless guidance from the state's provided, decision on mask wearing is at the local level. The two fall sports, though, to bring to your attention that happen indoors are volleyball and cheerleading. All of the other fall sports are outdoors, as I think most are aware. So I'll pause there for questions, or do you want me to keep going?
Questions about this part, or do you want to keep going?
I just have a couple of questions, and it might be premature at this stage, is I know that you had touched upon activities that may still remain virtual and remote, and can I just ask, because I think, you know, athletics is just, is important to a variety of some kids that are kids that aren't athletic that kind of thrive in the performing arts or band. And great, it was great that band was able to go outside and distance. I was just wondering if there was any particular activities that may, that may or may not go, you know, still remain in a remote...
Thank you for the question.
Like robotics and things like that.
Yeah, no. So just to clarify, and I appreciate that. So really, all activities with students returning to, right now, the view is we can offer everything in person. Things that come to mind, though, and maybe fewer and farther between, but for example, our new social emotional learning folks are planning a community meeting next week. Pre-pandemic, no Zoom, I don't think the idea of a virtual gathering would ever have come to anyone's mind, but that's something where, for a variety of different reasons, including people are still on summer break, the decision has been, let's have them offer that remotely, so we can record it, so we can have our community members access it, and that flyer, if it hasn't already gone out, will go out to the community. Some have asked about parent meetings. Might parent meetings with teachers be something that could or should continue in certain circumstances if accessibility is a challenge? So those are the kind of things that I was referring to?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
A thought or a concern that has crossed my mind quite a bit, I think that some schools in the district will be able to distance and still schedule or stagger lunches in a way that doesn't have kids eating lunch from 9:00 AM.
Right. Right.
To 3:00 p.m. But I, I think the, the middle school concerns me the most. I know that there was a lot of concern from parents around eating in the gym on the floor, and with us all being back, I'm not, I just can't envision myself how that's going to happen, and is it, I feel like it's not too early to be really thinking about that, and what kinds of strategies are we considering?
So, and I, I think Dr. Curdo joins us, he can also speak to this, but it is a question that I had for he and Shelley Newhouse, in terms of what is the recommended minimum distance, and, and three feet has, has surfaced, and that's different, as you'll recall, than what we were last year with six feet distance. So three feet may not sound like a lot, but the aggregate of that, when you're talking about hundreds of students mounts up quickly, and so the goal would be to try and minimize, to the greatest extent possible, spill over into other parts of the building, particularly gymnasiums. I know, you know, that, that was a challenge. And so we have to, we have to explore how that can be configured in all of our schools, not just the middle school, and how we can absolutely try and contain everything to the lunchroom. That would be the goal. With Dr. Curdo's, unless anything has changed, with his recommendation to us around as, you know, as close to three feet as possible, I think we can, I'm hopeful that we can come closer to that in most configurations and not require more real estate, if you will, in other parts of the building. But that six feet to three feet is a significant difference, for sure.
So, just to clarify, so you're, so if we are able to do three feet, we think that if we crunch those numbers, that we will be able to fit kids into the cafeteria?
Or, or require perhaps some spillover space, but not the need to, as we did with the middle school, take over almost the whole gym.
The gym.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So I'm just thinking, like, should we be thinking about tents and rentals, and just thinking about other districts at this point, you know, who are going to be racing to do that as well, potentially, so?
I'm just curious, you know, so.
It's been said that we're going back, we need to go back full-time, five days a week. Is there any planning for their kids who need to be out for extended amount of time, say quarantining if half the class ends up being out, or, you know, if they're sick with COVID? I just feel like, you know, if they're out for a week, two weeks, you know, some levels, probably, actually, at most levels, that's significant amount of learning that the students will be losing, so do we have a plan, or is there a way we can keep them on track with their learning and not have more learning loss?
Well, that's, that's, that's certainly tightly wound with the requirements around vaccination and trying to understand what that looks like. And I, I think Dr. Curdo and Ms. Crowe will speak to that in terms of another consideration for trying to mitigate that spread, with masking as another benefit, and hopefully trying to keep that lower, but that also comes into question around, what are the vaccination requirements if we have certain testing programs in place? So, again, that's very fluid right now in terms of what that looks like. But to answer the first part of your question, we do not have, and I'm sure I could speak for almost any district within our baseball throw, people do not have staff for remote instruction this year. We do not. We, we, last year was a very different scenario, and we had leaves that we were working with for folks who had requested that. We do not have staff at the ready to provide, you know, remote, complete remote instruction, so it is something that we have to still think about how we're going to handle, should that arise.
Okay. So I'm going to open this up for public comment, once again, after the full update. So if you'd like to make another comment after we're finished with the update, you're more than welcome to. Thank you.
Returning to, and hence why it's under the category of old business, and it's positioned there because it does speak to policy action that you took as a, as a committee, as did many, a year ago, and so that's what we're going to jump into now. So why, the fundamental or the overarching question of why are masks still even being considered right now? According to the CDC, the masking and face coverings, it continues to prevent exposure due to a number of different reasons, and you can see the information there around what is happening since the latter part, the beginning part of June, with the Delta variant, which we are certainly hearing an awful lot about. Dr. Curdo, I'm sure we'll speak to this in a, in a moment, but the transmis, transmissible nature of this variant is certainly receiving an awful lot of attention. We've got the realities of, in the schoolhouses, of some that are vaccinated, some that are not. On that point, you can see the, the numbers, those percentages down the, down the bottom are Wilmington numbers, so right now, with the age category of 12 to 15, we have 46% of students, or in that age bracket, that have been vaccinated. At the 16 to 19-year-old level, you can see the number is 67% of vaccinations. So that reality of co-mingling within a schoolhouse or schoolroom of some that are vaccinated, some that are not, also creates another dynamic, I suppose, if you will, that pushes towards the, the thought of masks as holding importance. Guidance around mask and face coverings, mentioned earlier, we've heard that earlier, the American Academy of Pediatrics guidance issued in July, July 19th, to be, to be exact, includes a recommendation that everyone older than age two wears a mask, regardless of vaccination status. That is shared by the CDC, who issued their guidance on July 27th, and as you've heard, recommends universal masking for all teachers, staff, students, and visitors to schools, regardless of vaccination status. DESI, in conjunction with the DPH, or Department of Public Health, they released updated guidance at the end of July, and that, as mentioned earlier, strongly recommends students in kindergarten through grade six wear masks, or for those that are not vaccinated, and going back to those numbers, we have, we still, certainly right now, as of today, if school was open, have quite a few students in both categories that are not vaccinated. In September of 2020, almost a year ago, you as a committee approved a policy, EBCFA, that addresses face coverings in schools, and the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, or MASC, provided that, if I recall correctly, that recommendation or suggestion around a boilerplate policy, which many school committees, maybe not all, but many, put into place. However, if they didn't approve that policy, there was still masking or face coverings that was required, you recall, from the DESI, the DESI guidance. There has been no action that you as a committee have taken since putting into place that policy, and so hence, it still remains in effect, and I'll draw attention to the fact that on August the 10th, and this is included in the packet, the Mass Association of School Committees issued an update to that policy. It was some subtle changes, for the most part, it remains much the same, but that update reflects the guidance and recommendations by the various health agencies listed earlier. MASC is recommending that school committees and superintendents consult, of course, with local health officials to determine the best practices, and almost done here, bear with me, on August the 4th, we met with the town of Wilmington's Emergency Management Team, which includes our school physician, Dr. Curdo, who is here with us on the, on the phone this evening, as well as Ms. Crowe, our Coordinator of Health Services. I think it's important to point out to the community that Dr. Curdo, Ms. Crowe, Ms. Newhouse, who is the Director of Public Health in Wilmington, as well as the Wilmington Board of Health, have universally recommended that we should require masks and face coverings for all students and staff, regardless of vaccination status, at least to open the school year. And you can see the, again, underscoring the rationale largely framed around the Delta variant, and that it will certainly be much easier and put us in a better place, in their opinion, to open schools with that requirement in place, and then to be able to lift that, as opposed to going in the other direction. And given those recommendations, as your superintendent, I'm recommending that you consider adopting the revised mask policy going forward. And with that, that's the end of the update.
Okay, thank you. All right, so why don't we start with school committee questions, and I'm assuming they'll either be directed to Dr. Brand or to Dr. Curdo, and?
I'm just curious if we can hear Dr. Curdo, and if you have to say.
Sure. Would you like to start with that? Yeah. Dr. Curdo, can you hear us?
Sort of on and off, but yeah.
Okay, so, so Mrs. Newhouse just asked if you might be able to provide us with a little bit of information before we begin asking some questions.
Sure, what would you like?
Well, mostly your recommendation for masking, if you could provide us some more details around that. Here it says, "The rationale centers around the current concerns of the Delta variant and recognition that it will be easier to remove this requirement as the conditions change," and I think we would just like to hear more about that discussion.
So, in terms of the universal masking, I would definitely have been more for proponent for masking for those who are unvaccinated, and then no masking for people who are vaccinated, because I would love to reward the people who got the vaccine. Speaking of the vaccine, the vaccine, the mRNA vaccine is about 95% effective against the ER. And I've only seen one preliminary study coming out of Israel showing that it's about 80 to 85% effective against the Delta variant. The Delta variant, as we know, is exceedingly more contagious than the original virus, but it doesn't seem to be more deadly, it doesn't seem to be creating more hospitalizations than the original. It's just exceedingly more contagious, so a lot more people are catching it, and that's kind of why we've seen an uptick in numbers, really, throughout July and August. If you compare the numbers currently compared to last year at this time, some of the numbers are, you know, 10 times higher right now for COVID, for COVID infections than they were at this time last year in the state of Massachusetts. In June, we were having maybe 40 or 50 cases a day, and right now, Massachusetts is averaging about 1,000, 1,100, 1,200 cases a day, which surprised me, because I, I thought at this point, we would be certainly a lot closer to herd immunity, given the fact that we have so many people who are vaccinated, and so many people at this point who have already caught the virus. Now, the Delta variant is not a new virus, so a lot of people tend to get that confused. They tend to think that it's a new virus, so therefore you can catch it all over again, but it's still the original COVID-19 virus. In terms of the universal masking, the way that I sort of pull all of these pieces together, one is that it's going to be exceedingly difficult to try and figure out who is vaccinated and who is unvaccinated. In an ideal world, we would have, you know, the Massachusetts Registry, the Immunization Registry would have everyone who is vaccinated in it, and then the nurses could pull that, but unfortunately, the Massachusetts Registry is certainly imperfect, as I can tell you from my office, where a lot of my patients who are vaccinated, they're not even in the Massachusetts Registry as vaccinated. I ran COVID vaccine clinics in New Hampshire, and I know for sure that any of the kids that I vaccinated in New Hampshire definitely are not in the Massachusetts Registry. So it's going to be really hard to try and police, you know, who is vaccinated and who is not, to try and figure out, okay, who can wear a mask and who doesn't have to wear a mask. And then, this little piece of me kind of thinks about, you know, say, all of the first graders who are sitting in their class, you know, with their masks on because they're unvaccinated, and they're with their teacher, who is hopefully vaccinated and therefore unmasked. And I always think of like the role model effect, where, you know, as parents, as teachers, you know, we're role models for these kids, and so we really have to, you know, try and emulate that. So I always, you know, kind of look at that little piece of it as well. The other thing in terms of the efficacy of the vaccine is that if the COVID vaccine stayed at 95% against the Delta variant, that it would be a lot easier to, it would be a lot easier to argue, you know, how the vaccine is going to not allow you to, or allow you to not wear a mask, but the fact that the efficacy is less against the Delta variant, and we're seeing that with the breakthrough cases that we're seeing. So, again, you put all of those little pieces together, and the only thing that makes sense to me is universal masking, which, like I said before, I would love to be able to reward the people that are vaccinated and say, hey, you don't have to wear a mask, but unfortunately, it just doesn't make sense when you pull all the little pieces together.
Thank you, Dr. Curdo. Mrs. Burns?
Dr. Curdo? Any questions?
I have a question for you on a, on a broader span, if you don't mind me asking. Are you familiar with the data across the country right now, with, especially in the southern states, with the increase in pediatric ICU cases? They're seeing a lot more, you know, mostly with kids who are too young to get vaccinated, with COVID, and I guess they're seeing an increase in co-infections with other viruses. They're complicated, and I know that the Washington Post, Friday, posted there were 12,000 cases in, in the month of July, and first week of August totaled 96,000 nationwide of similar, and I guess as of last Thursday, 1,785 were suspected or confirmed COVID cases, filling up these pediatric ICU units. Are you familiar with that, or is it in, have you been in contact with any of your colleagues with regards to what's, what's being seen more broadly?
I have thought about calling friends across the country to try and figure out whether or not the data that we're getting from the news and from the newspapers is truly real, or if they're sort of morphing the data a little bit. The hard part is that, like, right now in, in New England, you know, we're not seeing those huge increases, and it's hard to say whether that's because we have such an exceedingly high vaccination rate in New England, and so therefore, that's helping to protect around the kids. I can tell you, in my office, even though the Delta variant is super contagious, of the last 100 PCR tests that we've done in my office, only two have been positive, and both of those kids were in a family unit, where both mom and dad had COVID, they had minimal symptoms, so they got tested and they were positive. But we're starting to see a lot more family spread, where a parent is catching it, and then the kids are catching it from the parent. I haven't been able to call any of my, my colleagues to try and set out whether or not those, those statistics are, are true, you know, in how much the kids are catching, but I don't see it vocally, so it's hard for me to, to fully buy into what the, what the news is saying.
Absolutely understandable, because I think this, it's just something that's recently kind of come on radar, whether it is attributed or not, but it's just, I thought it was something, I guess, to be aware of, for lack of any other, other, you know, position, that they're just noticing an uptick in pediatric cases in those areas of the country, which I just, I'm all about being proactive and not being, you know, under, underactive. I just, you know, just, if we can brace, brace ourselves, you know? Now that the Commonwealth, too, is in high risk, I think all the districts or, the Commonwealth is either in high risk or high, is it susceptibility?
I think it's substantial transmission.
Thank you.
All the counties.
Thank, thank you, appreciate that. It's just, I think that was just something that came up on my radar with the, you know, it's not even a color code at this juncture, but, but thank you so much for your input, I appreciate it.
Mrs. Plowman? I'm sorry.
Hi, Dr. Curdo, Melissa Plowman. My question for you is, is COVID-19 as dangerous for children as the flu? And I'm not asking about positivity rates or transmissibility, because I think we all can agree that it's more highly contagious, but I'm asking specifically about risk of death or serious illness.
I, I don't have the, the data in front of me, but I would say that they're relatively equivalent in terms of, you know, the, you know, risk of death associated with it. Certainly with flu, we see, you know, 30, 40, 50 kids every year die from the flu, and I know that there's certainly been some deaths in kids related to COVID as well. If we use the numbers in adults, which are a lot more, a lot more available, in adults, COVID is a little bit more dangerous than the flu, in terms of our risk of death.
Thank you.
David.
Dr. Curdo, can you speak more broadly about the effectiveness of masks and the evidence for that?
I'm sorry, we were clear, I totally broke up.
My question is, can you speak more broadly about the general effectiveness of masks as a preventive measure and, I had another part of that question, which I, that's the basic.
Yeah, actually, I would love to, because it seems to be kind of a sticky point in the people who are, you know, non-masked or non-mask wearing people versus mask-wearing people. So it is true that a viral particle will go straight through a mask, you know, that, you know, when you're comparing the microns and the filtration rates and everything, and so a lot of people tend to quote those. The one piece that you have to try and remember is, when COVID first came out, we never knew whether or not this was spread through aerosol or droplets. And the difference between the two is aerosol are like the fine particles that would go through the mask, and droplets are more of those bigger particles that really don't travel, you know, further than three feet from your mouth. And all of the data at this point point to droplet spread. You know, it's not aerosol like measles, it's not, it's much more droplet spread. And that's where you really see the efficacy of the masks, where, you know, if it's catching those large droplets, then it is going to prevent the spread. And so that's sort of like my sciency way of kind of explaining it. As a pediatrician, I can tell you, I never in a million years thought that I would go nine months without seeing an ear infection, go 10 months without seeing a coxsackievirus, which is hand, foot, and mouth. And so when all of these kids were masked for school last year, it absolutely astounded me at how all of the head colds that trigger the ear infections and hand, foot, and mouth, which is exceedingly even more contagious than COVID, you know, were all stopped dead in their tracks by just masking and social distancing. I was completely flabbergasted by that. Last year, we saw almost no cases of the flu, you know, due to a number of factors, of the two of which being masking and social distancing.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Does that help?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Curdo. Mrs. Plowman?
So, on the surface, Dr. Curdo, it sounds like, oh, that's great, you know, no flu, none of this, but at the same time, there's a part of me that says, ooh, that's probably not good though, right? Because kids are not developing immunity, or their, you know, their immune systems when this is done are going to be weaker. I mean, I'm not a doctor, I'm not a scientist, but that seems logical to me, and I wonder if you can speak to that, but also can you, in your practice, have you seen detrimental health issues due to masking?
So let me take the second one first. So in terms of the detrimental effect, they've done studies looking at, you know, if you're wearing a pulse ox probe on your finger, looking at your oxygen levels, looking at the carbon dioxide levels in your, you know, in your blood, in your breath, things like that with masking, and they've shown really no difference with the masks in terms of your oxygen levels, your carbon dioxide levels. I would say the only piece that you tend to, that I tended to see really increase over this past year was a lot of social anxiety and anxiety. And it's really hard for me to tease how much of that was masks versus how much of that was related to, you know, just COVID in general. In terms of the first, I totally forget what the first question was now.
Well, it's just about.
What was the first part?
The lack of immunity, you know, are we doing longer-term detriment to?
Yeah, so, so the, by the time kids are two, three, four, or five years of age, they've certainly developed their immune systems, you know, in terms of how their immune systems work, their memory B cells, their T cells, their natural killer cells, they've developed their immune system, which typically happens after two months of age. Now, so, and this is the piece that I would tease out, is that their immune systems aren't going to be weaker, but at the same time, their immune systems, once they are exposed to the flu and colds and things like that, are going to be more susceptible because they're going to be novel, you know, they're going to be new to the immune system, and so their immune systems are going to kind of overreact to it. Sort of like if, like, let me go back in time to the H1N1 pandemic, the swine flu back in 2009. So when we, that was a massive year for flu, the worst I've ever seen as a pediatrician. And that following year, we saw relatively no flu, because so many people already had those circulating antibodies in their system. So not their immune system being stronger, but just that circulating immunity, that herd immunity, if you will, that helps to protect them that following year. And so the year, so the year after H1N1, we saw a super quiet year for flu. The following year, we tended to see a little rebound in it, again, because there wasn't that circulating antibody level, and so therefore the people, you know, weren't as protected against the flu, if that makes sense.
Yes, thank you.
So I wouldn't say their immune system is weaker, but I would say that they're definitely going to be more susceptible, because their body wouldn't have fought off 10 colds this past year and one coxsackievirus and one case of the flu. And so that, those, their memory B cells that remember those and the antibody levels are going to be lower.
Dr. Curdo, Jen Bryson. So clearly, we have a large responsibility here, and so while we're weighing health and safety of our, of our children and our staff, there's also this piece of me that keeps thinking about making sure kids are staying in school. So this fear of, I don't want classes to shut down, I don't want to have to go back to any type of remote learning. Do you think that there, I guess my question is for Dr. Curdo or Ms. Crowe, when it comes to masking or not masking, how do you anticipate that will change sort of contact tracing or, or will it not? So I'm starting to make it for masks, do we have a less of a chance of having to shut down large classes, or is there not a real advantage there? Does that make sense?
You are breaking up, so I only heard part of that. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Right now, we're driving through New York in a tunnel.
No worries. Thank you for being here. Basically, what would happen to contact tracing if masks are being worn or if masks are not being worn? That's sort of where my, what I'm thinking.
What would happen if, if what masks were being worn or not being worn?
So, yeah, so if we had.
In terms of quarantine?
If we're doing universal masking, and we're thinking about, there's a case in a particular class, if everyone is unmasked, my hypothesis, my guess is that we would be, a lot more students and teachers would have to be out. But if they're masked, do we have more of a chance of keeping kids in school, is my question?
Okay, I got, I'm tracking now. So when you, when it comes to being exposed, when it comes to being like a direct contact, and now you have to, you know, sit out for the five days until you get tested so you can go back in on day seven or eight, unfortunately, they don't take masks into consideration when they're looking at, you know, whether or not you quarantine versus printing. The vaccine makes a difference, where if you're asymptomatic and you're at direct contact, then you do not have to quarantine. Once you get symptoms, then you have to be tested. But the mask, the universal masking is going to help significantly reduce the spread of Delta. Just because, as we were talking earlier, it's going to catch those droplets, and we are seeing how incredibly contagious the Delta variant is right now, that my fear is, once schools do start up, it's going to be, if mass, universal masking isn't there, we're going to have entire schools being shut down, because there's going to be so many cases, you know, in the school system. I'm sorry, I hope that helped.
No, thank you. Mrs. Newhouse?
Dr. Curdo, I was curious, your recommendation right now is for the universal masking, is there a threshold that you'd like to see to be able to take away the universal masking recommendation? Or, you know, is it a wait-and-see, or?
I'm strongly in favor of, you know, kind of watching how the Delta variant plays out, and as long as we don't get a Lambda variant or a Mu variant, or, you know, one of the, you know, some other variant coming along, then what should happen is, because the Delta is so contagious, we will get to that herd immunity quicker, and then therefore we will see, you know, this uptick, you know, throughout July and August really start to die out quickly. It's hard to say when, because I wish my crystal ball was working, but, but I totally agree that if we start to see that, you know, Delta coming down, I don't have a threshold in my mind in terms of like an actual number, you know, that I would, I would leave up to the DPH and people that love numbers even more than I do. But I totally agree that if we see Delta start to kind of burn itself out, you know, and the numbers go way, way, way back down again, yeah, we could totally pull the masks at that point, and, and basically, instead of having like a universal policy regardless, kind of adjust to the times.
Mrs. Plowman?
I want to continue that part of this conversation, because that is where my mind is at, around fluidity, and if this is being left as a local decision, I'm of the mindset that we have to look at the local numbers, not the national numbers.
Correct, yep.
And I think that's important, I think it's very, so my goal in this meeting tonight is that everyone feels heard, that whatever decision that this committee is charged with, that everybody feels like we have heard them. And I don't think that we could possibly do that if there were a blanket kind of policy, and certainly not a year-long policy. I know you were talking about DPH, kind of identifying what that threshold is, but I would love to see you, Dr. Curdo, as our school physician, and Doreen Crowe, or the coordinator of Health Services, alongside the Board of Health, sort of identifying, what is that equation? Because I think that the community needs to know to what end. And I don't know if it's, is that a possible thing, that we could ask of you and the people who are health experts to do that?
I appreciate the trust in terms of developing that measure. The hard part for me is knowing which statistic is the most relevant. You know, is it the positivity rate? Is it the absolute number of cases? You know, is it the number of cases in kids versus adults? That, to me, is the part that I would find the most confusing to try and tease apart, to find which measure is, you know, the measure that we could be able to link the masking to. Definitely gives me something to research, though.
Mrs. Burns?
I would have a suggestion before the board, that whatever, however we go with this policy, if we do implement and carry it over, that we revisit it, I think it should be maybe a living document, because I, from my understanding, you know, I know that, you know, working in internal medicine, they're preparing for the fall with, with great hopes that if everybody stays the course, we can, you know, have a more positive fall without it resurging again. From what my understanding is, Dr. Curdo, please feel, please correct me, that I know that the medical, I know the medical world, and especially adult medicine, is just bracing itself now, only because other viruses are out there. But I say that we go back and revisit and see if we can get a, you know, let's say December, we revisit this policy and where we are in the community with cases and likelihood. But this is a, this, from my understanding, and again, Dr. Curdo, correct me if I'm wrong, it's, as of now, from my understanding, especially with this Delta, is that it's still an ebb and flow, and that they're still researching it and its potency, and because it's a virus, it does have that capacity to mutate. And, I mean, that's what I've gathered from the work emails I've gotten and protocols that they're re-instituting within the hospital setting, so.
Yep. Yeah, they've definitely seen many, many mutations even beyond Delta, but Delta's the only one that sort of found that magic formula, that magic gene that has made them so much more contagious.
Piggybacking on what Ms., first I just have a comment, that piggybacking on Ms. Plowman and Ms. Burns, that I agree that we need to, we need to keep an eye on this and revisit this, because no, no parent is excited about having their kids in masks this year. And, you know, we might accept it as a reluctant necessity, but we want, I think that parents want to know, that the moment that we think that this is not something that is needed, that the masks will come off, and that there's not just going to be another goal and another goal, and well, it's always a little bit marginally safer with a mask on versus not a mask. And so at some point, we have to say, it's okay. And if people have no, no confidence that that's where we're aiming for, that like our goal is to get to a place where we can do that, then it's very hard to take. I wanted to ask a little bit about, you mentioned, Dr. Curdo, that the mRNA vaccines have shown to be a little bit less effective against Delta. I believe that that's mostly, though, in infection, in preventing infection, that they are still shown to be highly effective in preventing serious sickness and death. Is that, am I correct on that?
Yeah, it's still very effective, so even if you get the breakthrough case, so if you're the 15% or so that get the breakthrough, it's still a much milder illness than it would have been otherwise.
Okay, and it sounded to me, and tell me if I'm interpreting you right, it sounded to me like your primary objection to making masks optional for vaccinated students and staff was essentially just the difficulty of knowing for sure, that it's sort of a compliance and proof issue, you know, the logistics of knowing for sure who's been vaccinated, is, am I correct that that was not the only reason, but perhaps the primary one?
I would find that to be one of the biggest reasons, is trying to police, you know, who is vaccinated versus who is not.
Because part of my, when, I mean, when DPH came out with their recommendation that grades, you know, basically the unvaccinated that they recommend should be masked, but the unvaccinated they recommend should be allowed to go maskless, and this, of course, was Massachusetts-specific, so it's not countrywide CDC APA recommendations or AEP, that they're, you know, they're looking at the Massachusetts context, where we have high rates of vaccination, and that this is part of how we encourage and incentivize more vaccination, which is the solution, which is the way that we actually get through this, is by getting as many people vaccinated and ultimately as many kids. We can't do under 12 yet, but once we can, and hopefully that'll happen sometime, you know, later this fall, then we want to be able to have as much encouragement incentive as possible for students to get vaccinated. And of course, right now, we still have students who are eligible who are not vaccinated, as we saw the numbers from, from. as we saw the numbers from Dr. Brand's presentation earlier.
Yeah, most of the studies that I've seen that have done parental polling amongst the 12 to 16-year-olds, it's, our numbers kind of line up with all of the polls that I've read, where it seems like only about 40 to 50% of parents of kids between 12 and 16 are really for the vaccine, or will give their kid their vaccine, I should say.
Well, I mean, which is part of why I think that anything that is an encouragement and potentially, you know, tilts the, tilts, you know, the decision towards vaccination is something helpful. So I'm, you know, I wonder if by not adopting that recommendation from the mass DPH, if we are not, you know, slowing down our ability to actually get to higher vaccination rates and which gets us past this. I mean, that's, that's obviously a judgment call, that's not a medical call. I'm not asking you to make a medical judgment of what, you know, people will do as far as getting, whether they will in fact get vaccinated, that's a psychology question and many other kinds. But that is my concern about the universal masking mandate, even for vaccinated students especially, is that there's less encouragement and less incentive for students to be vaccinated. I'll make that as a comment to the board.
I appreciate that comment. Jessie?
Dr. Kirdo, can I just ask a question to clarify? And I could be wrong, but you had said a few minutes ago in response to something Mr. Ragsdale asked, that it's been shown generally that individuals who have the vaccine get sort of milder symptoms than unvaccinated folks in general. Is that true for individuals with underlying health issues as well? Or is that for what you would consider generally healthy people? Is it kind of the same across the board?
I don't know if they've ever stratified it into, you know, people with weakened immune systems versus people with uncontrolled diabetes versus people with asthma, uncontrolled asthma. I don't know if they've ever stratified it that way, but it's just one of those things that I've seen over and over again, is just that they talk about how the vaccine makes the disease just more mild.
Thank you.
I think the harder part is you start to stratify, or is the people who are immunosuppressed, the elderly, how much did they actually respond to the vaccine in the first place? You know, in terms of, you know, is there, are they immunocompetent enough in order to mount a good immune response? And I think that's where we're going to see the boosters come in, where certainly Modern and Pfizer are going to be pushing a booster right now for people who are immunocompromised and got the vaccine, or the elderly got the vaccine because of the, you know, how much they responded to the vaccine in the first place.
Dr. Kirdo, Jen Bryson again. So recently, just today, actually, I've see, I've noticed that CDC is beginning to push masking for indoor, for everybody, vaccinated or unvaccinated. Is that, is that going to be a real thing? Or are we going to start seeing, I feel like I'm already seeing it more in the stores and in and around town in the city, do you, so I'm trying to sort of say, okay, wait a minute, are we now requiring it to go into Panera, but we're going to provide choice to go to school? So I guess in the next few weeks, sort of how do you see this, how do you see this playing out with masking in and around our town?
I only heard about half of what you said, unfortunately.
It's me, what is wrong with me?
Repeat it, sorry.
That's okay. How can I simplify?
I'm trying my best.
Can you hear me now? I think I'm in a Verizon commercial.
Yep.
Okay.
It's just really echoey, so.
Yeah, do you want to try?
I'm in closer proximity to the speaker, so I'll try to ask Jen's question. The question is, we're seeing more decision-making, perhaps, on like public establishments where masking may not be an option, it may be a requirement. So I think there's, would be concern if we don't go with a universal masking policy, is that inconsistent with what we might anticipate to see in the upcoming weeks around requirements for masking in other places? Do you have any sense of that?
CDC guidelines?
There, I think they're letting private businesses kind of make their own decisions on what people do in those. I don't, I don't know if Shelley knows anything else about that, but I would imagine that as, as we start to see the numbers, you know, continue to increase with, with Delta, that, you know, people are going to be, you know, making more and more restrictive decisions that way.
Thank you. So I'm going to have you make your public comment at the end of this update, but you can't, we're not going to have questions and answers with Dr. Kirdo. So you can make another comment to us as the board.
But he can answer my question at the end.
No.
He's a doctor, please.
But you can make your comment to us at the end. You could, well, let us finish this up, and then he'll still be on the phone.
He's a doctor, this is, this is why I'm here.
So let me first go to the board, go ahead. Are there any other questions from the board for Dr. Kirdo? No? Okay. All right. Would you like to make another public comment?
Yeah, let's ask a question.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Dr. My name is Stephen Beggins, I live at 18 Jones Avenue, Wilmington. Now, I have a-
Mr. Beggins, this is not an opportunity to, you can make a public comment to the board, but this is not-
I can't ask a doctor a question?
No, that we can, members, members of the committee audience don't ask questions of the other people at the table who come before the committee.
You can pose it to us, and we can pose it.
Okay. Can you ask the doctor? We know that this vaccine is an experimental use vaccine. There's different natural medicines out there, Regeneron is one of them, hydroxychloroquine and ivermectin. Now, is those three medications, will those be available to students if they do come down with those symptoms? Because I've heard nothing but positive things about those, and not as many positive things with the vaccine itself, especially with it being an experimental vaccine.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think that would be a question I can perhaps ask Doreen, as far as-
Send it to Doreen.
Whether our school is, because as far as what students, individual physicians will do.
Right, right, right. So Ms. Crowe, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, how are you? So we just received a-
I'm good, how are you?
I'm well, thank you. We just received a question about the use of those three additional medications for students who do, who do contract COVID-19. Do you have any sense as to whether or not we would be offering that? I don't think that we could speak to what other physicians would be doing. But would the school be in a position to offer medication for students who do come down with COVID?
No, we would not do that. What we would do is we would refer the student to their primary care provider or their pediatrician.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Okay.
Any other questions for Doreen or Dr. Kirdo? Mrs. Plowman?
My question is, so I heard you guys talk a little bit, and I think this decision was made at the August 4th Emergency Management Committee meeting. I may have some comments to share about that in a moment. But my question for you is, it seems that it was decided in that meeting that it's easier or advisable to pull back on mitigation practices versus starting out the year with lighter restrictions and then amping up or ramping up the mitigation practices? Can you help us understand that conversation in that meeting and the decision around one versus the other?
I guess the two comments that, that I would, that I would say is, if, so if you look at the numbers of COVID last year versus this year, as I was talking about, significantly higher this year. Last year, we were going with universal masking anyway. And so it would be hard for me to say, okay, even though the numbers are higher, let's start with less restrictions, even though they're higher than they were last year. So that's one thought that I had. And then the, the second one was, in terms of, it's sort of like, once the horse is out of the barn, it's hard to put the horse back in. And so, especially when it comes to diseases, especially super contagious diseases, it's really hard to try and contain them, as you can tell with how they tried to contain COVID in the, in the very beginning and really could not, could not do it. And that wasn't even the Delta more contagious one. So it was more a matter of, okay, let's, you know, let these numbers come down, and then as the numbers come down, then it makes sense to sort of peel back the, the universal masking recommendation. And we weren't making the decision, we were just coming up what sort of a recommendation for the school committee.
And I would like to add that our conversation evolved around the layered approach to protecting the students and the staff, in that it's not just one mitigation strategy, but that combination of strategies. So vaccination, universal masking, ventilation testing, quarantining, cleaning, disinfecting. And we talked a lot about, you know, the fact that vaccinated individuals can both be infected by and spread COVID in the Delta variant, and that the distancing and cohorting would not be maintained like it was last year. And we also talked about the fact that there's a significant portion of the student population that's not vaccinated, and that vaccinated and unvaccinated individuals may have underlying health conditions, or household members with, with underlying health conditions. And then the added benefit that we've already mentioned tonight of the universal masking is protecting the students against other respiratory illnesses, and those can resemble COVID, you know, the colds and the flus, the symptoms that are associated with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crowe. Mrs. Newhouse?
Probably a question for Mrs. Crowe. So is it true, if students have colds this year but are testing negative for COVID, that they'll still be allowed back in school? Because I know last year, there was a number of times with, you know, they had all, kids had these symptoms, and it was like, oh, it's better off staying home even if negative. Will we be allowing kids to return once they get that negative test?
Yep. So what will happen is they'll have to have a negative test, and they'll have to have improvement in symptoms before returning to school.
Can you elaborate on that? When you say improvement of symptoms, do you mean-
Yep.
If they have a runny nose?
So it just-
Yep, go ahead.
Yep, it depends on what this, it depends on what the symptom's on, so they should be feeling better, they should be fever-free for 24 hours without the use of fever-reducing medication.
Okay. Which would be, which would be typical? We wouldn't, that would be in normal times as well, we'd have to be fever-free for 24 hours?
Yep.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Joe.
Of the, the mitigation strategies that are generally recommended both this year and towards the end of last year, the only one that we didn't do for a number of reasons was the testing program. And that is something that is available in different ways. This year again, I think that the state is covering the cost of certain aspects of a, of a testing program. Can either or both of you talk about what potential benefits we could see from that and how that would potentially alter any of the recommendations or hasten when we could, again, possibly rescind a mask mandate if, if we also had some testing robustly in the district?
So I can try to, to answer this one first. So the state is recommending three different options for testing, and right now, we're looking into those specific options to see if those are viable for us to offer in Wilmington.
Mrs. Burns? So of those options, this is actually for probably Mr. Rogero, the options we're considering for testing, would we still be able to use ESSR funds for this, testing to offer it?
My understanding is some of the testing is free of charge, I believe.
Okay.
The Department of Education is supporting, from what we understand, they're, they're supporting most of the costs for the testing program options, but at the same time, we would anticipate that we would need additional capacity to some degree here on the ground. So that might be a cost incurred for additional staffing or personnel.
I'm assuming, I know that they were recommending, again, the pool testing piece.
Right.
But again, it's, with that is a three-step process as well with regards to pool, if someone comes up positive, then you've got to go through, I think, the PCR piece, and then there's another testing depending, to narrow that field. So that's like three types of tests, all of which, you know what I mean? And I wasn't sure what other factors, or accessibility or availability, the district would offer in those, in those additional two testing.
Ms. Crowe and I have exchanged a few communications about that. I think that what's fair to say, and I think caution to be had, is when, and the Department of Education has been quite clear that they are supporting the fiscal costs of the testing programs. However, it also seems clear that, that the capacity of the DESI support would not be everything that we would need, that it would be, it simply is not going to be the case that they're going to supply all personnel to cover all the costs, that it would be totally free for each district. It seems clear that there will be some necessary personnel to help support it on the ground. So how much, how much, how much would that cost? That's unclear right now, and as, as Ms. Crowe said, we're exploring, we're exploring what those options might look like.
The other caveat to that is too, is that, have, I know they've shut down vaccination sites, but have they've also shut down testing sites outside of like CVS or, you know, laboratories? I don't know if Dr. Kirdo or Doreen could speak to that. If, knowing that vaccination sites are shut down, have they shut down any testing sites?
I know in the state of New Hampshire, where I'm in the National Guard, they, they shut down all of the mass testing sites, so the large-scale testing sites, but it's mostly because the hospitals, the pharmacies, the Walmarts, you know, even like some of the pediatrician offices like us, you know, have testing capabilities now. So I think that they got rid of some of the, like the large-scale testing sites, but there's plenty of testing available.
Good.
Sure.
Good. Just want to make sure there's still accessibility without, you know. Thank you.
Dr. Kirdo or Ms. Crowe? Jen Bryson again. Can you hear me okay?
Kind of, you're distant.
All right, I'll try and talk really loudly. Is it still the case that parents can get exemptions to the mask-wearing mandate if their child has a condition from their, from their pediatrician? And can you describe that process for us?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead, Doreen.
Yep, yes, so a parent can, we can get a doc, we can request that the doctor provide a note, and then the school nurse would, may need to consult with the physician or the family, depending on, you know, what the concern is for behavioral or medical reasons that the child would be exempt.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? So I think we'll, we'll discuss now, but stick around, please, because I have a feeling more questions may, may come up if you don't mind. All right. Anyone else want to share anything before we move to the next step? Anyone else want to share anything before we move to the next step?
What is the next step?
Well, the the final step would be for someone to make a motion or not to make a motion. Right, so.
I'd like to comment, as I think I touched upon, I would be interested in the board's thoughts about revisiting this policy incrementally throughout the school year, whether it be three or four month cycles, as the situation ebbs and flows in in the Commonwealth, to revisit. And I just, I guess, that would be my first comment. My second comment is, I think my priority right now is keeping the school district open and full in person learning as safely as possible, because I I it's truly my belief that the well being of each child is benefited within the school environment, communicating with their friends, being in front of their teachers, and being in in the learning environment consistently and effectively. And if mask wearing is what's going to allow this and allow our schools to remain open through an uncertain winter, that we we don't even know what it's going to look like yet, then I I just assume err on caution than err on something that we could potentially shut down our schools again, because I really, last year was just one too many years in that mode. And I certainly don't want to go back and or revisit that. So I just share my my position at this time.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I don't I don't disagree. I mean, my my worry is is always is that health and safety, and then obviously keeping our kids in school, which is a part of health and safety, because we know that being home was not beneficial for for most of them. So I am, I keep asking myself, is it irresponsible to allow choice for mask wearing? Like, that's going through my, would it be an irresponsible decision on our part to not follow the advice of of the health professionals who have provided us this? So that's where I'm going back and forth. And I'm also on this place of, well, what will it be in two weeks? Maybe it would be better in two weeks, and so should we make a decision now or should we wait? But then I know families want to know. And so it's like this, is it easier just to to I don't want to do what's easier, I want to do what's what's safer. But I also don't want to leave people hanging. However, as Dr. Brand has said repeatedly, this is so, this is fluid, and so things are constantly changing. And so what seems like a little bit of a difficult decision right now, two weeks from now, might not be difficult at all, because we could be in a in a better place, or we could be in a place that's not better, you know. So it's so that's, I'm just sort of going back and forth a little bit on that as we sit here and and talk through this.
If that, in fact, is the case, and I I suspect that mask wearing, if we were to continue with this policy, that there would have to be a time of sustainability in the community as well. But it's always something that I see as we can bring forth back onto our agenda to revisit at any point. I I I simply, you know, it's this is any policy can be brought forth at any point to for discussion or, you know, comment. So I I see that as allowing the board to be flexible as this situation unfolds, because as, you know, like Dr. Curdo, I my crystal ball just misplaced. So but, you know, I just, I do think that it would be, but it would behoove us to continue this conversation beyond just tonight. Because it's students, it's families, it's staff that it impacts, and we just, you know, that's just my, I'm sorry.
No, thank you. Mrs. Newhouse.
Honestly, I don't know if it's too much, and if we do go with what the medical professionals are recommending to us. Knowing that this virus changing ever so quickly, is it something that we want to keep on old business almost every meeting? And, you know, maybe that meeting, I know we have a lot of other business that needs to be done, but maybe that meeting's like, we have no common status quo and just move on. Or there may be, okay, lots have changed in the last two weeks, we need to revisit this tonight. I just feel like, you know, to go two, three months out, so much is changing, and, you know, a quick update every meeting, even if it makes our meetings go a little bit later than everybody wants, I think it's important for the safety and education of our students to keep it front for front and center of everyone's attention. And, you know, I think it's most important to find a way to keep our kids in school consistency and not shutting our schools down every other week, because we've got issues. And, you know, the other big thing on my mind with all of this is the mental health piece for all of these students. The kids with social and social issues, you know, masks make it so much harder, they're not reading social cues, they're not learning the strategies that they need to be able to overcome their their mental health issues. And, you know, I we are, we're not helping them, but I also need to remember, we also need to remember their health, health piece of it, too. So it's hard to weigh it back and forth, and it's 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 hurting a lot of our kids. So, you know, but I also want to keep them healthy and not see them on a ventilator either. So, you know, this whole subject really does, you know, it tears me both ways, and I can see it both ways. So it's it's a hard decision. But I'd like to, you know, if we do end up adopting this, I'd like to keep it front and center and on everybody's mind, and not one of these policies that we've reviewed for the first time since 1973.
Go ahead, and then I'm, Mr. Samaha's not here, but he did send me a comment, so I'll read that. Go ahead, Mr. Exte.
Just, I'm I'm not sure if I I have to think through a little bit more about like how frequently I think that we would want to have this this come through. I don't know if if we would really want it on like every on every meeting. But but I think I absolutely agree and appreciate with the idea behind this, which is that this has to be something that is, you know, on on our minds and constantly reviewed, because and, you know, we we really had no choice last year. I mean, literally, it was a mandate from the state. We have more flexibility this year. You know, we think that there's, you know, reluctantly, we may need to do this, at least for the moment. But there are a lot of negative educational factors in mask wearing, and that's what we are, that's what our district is here for, that we're an educational institution. And, you know, some have already been mentioned as far as, you know, being able to what what Ms. Newhouse was just saying, but, you know, just being able to gain approval from teachers, being able to check for understanding to students. There was so much, you know, nonverbal interaction between teachers and students and between students and students. And so we don't, I think we can't ignore that this has negative educational consequences for students, and therefore is something that it's like the moment that we really think that we don't need this on, you know, on balance, it's just like it should be gone. We have to be, you know, confident that we are there, that we that we feel that this is safe. I mean, you know, we have to educate them, but we have to keep them safe even before that. But but, you know, safe to the reasonable and appropriate degree, because there's no way for everything to be completely safe. You know, you but, you know, you take your life into your hands every time you get in a car or swim in the ocean, and, you know, this requires, you know, the weighing of the trade offs.
You touched upon something, too, Mr. Exte, it it does offer a negative aspect, but I think how we spent the last year in remote was also negative. There's a lot of kids who were disengaged, and I think that's a huge negativity, and mental health on top of that. I know there's some some kids who couldn't engage through the remote, they couldn't capture it, especially from personal experience, some emotional aspects, it just the inability to read the room or the facial expressions of their peers caused caused larger mental health issues. So it's it is, it's a balancing act, and it's it's it is juggling, it's not, okay, where's the priority? And I think safe and health and safety and in a learning environment. You know, it's it's a half, nothing's a perfect situation, which kills me, because you want it to be perfect, and you want to, we want, I, we all want to offer our students the best learning and educational experience that they have. And doing that in a pandemic has been ever so challenging, because somebody's always losing out in some aspect. But again, as I said, you know, I think being able to open our schools up to learning is is just so vital, I think, in in so many aspects, and we'll have to, I think, be creative on the on the on the back end, especially those who don't benefit the most with the limitations that we have in society right now.
I do have actually another question that when we talk about being creative, I'm thinking specifically about our children who are learning to read. So I'm thinking of our K, K one, two, and how detrimental it is to teach teaching, I'm a teacher of reading, and it's very, very difficult to teach reading with with a mask. Not impossible, but incredibly difficult. And so and very difficult, because children need to see your mouth, they need to see where you put your tongue, they need to, they need to show you, and then you need to help them modify. And so I'm thinking in terms of, is there anything we can do that would, so it's, we're masking, but are there points in the day, if the teacher, and I know this is hard, but where if I'm teaching in a very small group with, say, three children, and we are distanced the way we need to be, is it possible for a teacher to be able to take their mask down, for the children to take their mask down? Like, just so to be creative and say, okay, for the most part, this makes the most sense, but there are definitely times where it is absolutely essential for that child to see my mouth and for me to see their mouth. Is there a way we can be flexible? And I think if we say it's a ma, it's a mandate, everyone's wearing it all the time, and kids are being told all the time to put it on. And so that's, so is there a way we can do this? And like, so I guess this is for Dr. Curdo and Doreen, like, is there something we can do safely indoors where children could still get the education that they so that they need, but we could, we could say we're checking that box of of being safe in those classrooms? I'm sure he heard nothing that I said.
Such as Plexiglas for situations of that you've touched upon.
Sure, but we're not, the children are not going to have those, most likely. I mean.
I mean, if there's a.
Oh, Plexi, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I thought you meant the see through, yeah.
Oh, no, 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 no Plexiglas between the teacher and a small group of students.
Sure, sure. Anything? Hello? Doreen, can you hear us?
Yep, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Plexiglas Plexiglas would be an option, but it, you know, I don't know if it's available or if it's cost prohibitive. I couldn't answer that question. But I think, you know, we definitely need to continue taking the mask breaks outside. There's lots of opportunity for that, as long as the weather is good. Other than that, I'm not quite sure what we could do.
Jen, I think to your larger question, I don't see any reason that we couldn't adopt a policy that has some flexibility for situations that are, you know, approved as, you know, safe by the, you know, by the nursing, by the coordinator of health or the superintendent. As far as, I don't know exactly what that would be, but I don't see any reason that we can't adopt a policy that also can have some flexibility in certain circumstances with the proper approvals.
Okay, thank you.
You know, and with parent, you know, with parent consent in that in that area as well, I think.
I don't see the need for a policy, per se, because I think it's a part of the educational process and the resources and the tools that we find ourselves in this side of this. I I just see it as another resource or tool for teaching and educating our children in a unprecedented time. Something like Plexiglas, I think the creativity, I think this is, this is what's going to challenge us, too, is how do, how can we supersede where we are right now with a a public health crisis in order to to educate our kids in in the best and correct way possible? I, you know, I would, I would just take that as a tool resource for for the administration to offer staff, how we can figure it out, do you know what I mean? And I think creativity, I mean, I've seen, you know, I've, we've heard in, I know, I've heard in news articles, some very creative ways, teachers have, especially in the remote piece, have taken their kids on these virtual field trips. One teacher in Lowell or Lawrence went, bought a school bus, and he did his classes outside and showing them nature and pointing out plants and things of that sort. I think, I I think, I think maybe an incentive, you know, the most creative, that's something to think about, you know, to try to incentives about how creative can we be with our with our students and their learning with, you know, the obstacles we face.
Mrs. Plomin.
I I want to speak a little bit about this idea to come back, Jen, to what you were saying about, is it irresponsible? Are we being irresponsible if we don't do universal masking mandate, but have it be more flexible, right? And I just want to bring us back to a couple of things that Dr. Curdo said that are stirring my thinking a bit. In addition to, I I want to speak a little bit to the emotional health and the social and emotional health of of students. I think that there are a great number of families, probably nationwide, but most certainly in this town, who either made the decision to vaccinate their 12 and up older kids and children who made that decision for themselves and were supported by parents, based on the fact that they were going to, that it was their understanding that they were going to get a piece of their life back. And it felt like a risk for them, but a risk that they were willing to take. And something that I hold in my mind is, what messaging are we sending to those kids that, I I don't know, I just, I worry about the levels of mistrust from our children to us that made a decision like that. But then, but then in the back of my mind, I I balance that with, but this is safety and health, until I heard Dr. Curdo reference that not masking for vaccinated kids was really largely a decision or recommendation based on logistics and that being very difficult to kind of track. And and I I want to believe that we can collectively be more creative and figure that out, if that is truly the reason for that recommendation, that makes me want to pause and say, well, is that the right reason to do universal masking, because it's logistically challenging? And then I heard Dr. Curdo also say that masking isn't going to impact closures. Did I understand that correctly? That masking isn't going to change whether a person is identified as a close contact or not? Because that's a big factor, and I was glad that you asked that, Jen.
So it's interesting, because, do you mind?
No, please.
When I'm asking that, so I I was asking that in terms of of tracing. But although his, but their response to that was, without masking, more children will be positive. Right. In which case, we would have larger numbers, and we'd have to then close those classes. So I think it's two sided, so I I hear you. But I also think there's another piece to that, which is, I think, what he then led to was, yes, he does predict that if we do not require masking, that we will be looking at class or school closures. I mean, Dr. Curdo, are we mixing up your words?
So it wasn't just the logistics of knowing whether someone's vaccinated or unvaccinated. That was certainly one piece of it, but there's lots of other pieces, like the the fact that the vaccine is only 80 to 85% effective against Delta. So even if we had kids who were vaccinated and not wearing the mask, there's still a 10 or 15% chance that they could still catch and pass on the the Delta variant. And then I jokingly, you know, made the role model reference about, you know, how some people are going to be vaccinated and some are not. And then we brought in the statistics of how, you know, only about 50% of parents of kids between 12 and 16 are supportive of vaccinating their kids anyway. So it wasn't just the tracking of the vaccine, although I think that's a big piece of it, but there were lots of other.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
But just to tack on to the the issue of masking versus whether kids have to quarantine or not, that that doesn't affect.
Right.
Like the DESI put out, you know, new guidance recently about how how to handle positive cases in school, and there are various criteria about whether people have been vaccinated, whether they've had COVID within the last 90 days, and but but there's nothing about whether they were masked or not, as far as identifying them as a close contact and then what what needs to happen.
Yep, that's what I understood, thank you.
So this, this is a nature of mine, so the kids who are vaccinated, they won't have to quarantine, like the unvaccinated kids, with or without masks. I mean, that's almost a benefit for the kids who are vaccinated.
Unless they have symptoms.
Unless they have. Unless they have symptoms.
Is that correct, Doreen?
That's correct, yes. The kid, kids, kids do not have to quarantine if they're vaccinated as long as they are asymptomatic.
Other questions or comments from the board? So I'll read Jay Samaha's statement. He says, let me first apologize for not being able to attend this incredibly important meeting. After reviewing the guidance from DESI, the CDC, the APA, and the recommendations from the WPS physician, WPS Coordinator of Health Services and Wilmington DPH, I'm in favor of universal masking for all students ages two and up. This is not an easy decision. As a teacher who is being required by his district to wear a mask, I am not thrilled at the prospect of continued masking. I know firsthand how difficult it is to teach and learn behind a mask. I would love a return to maskless regular classrooms. However, in the face of rising cases, variants, and even breakthrough cases, it would be ill advised to go against the recommendations of the experts. I support Dr. Brand's recommendation to the Wilmington School Committee to adopt MASC policy, EBCFA, as revised on August tenth, twenty twenty-one. In addition, I am in favor of the district exploring more testing options. Jay Samaha. Mrs. Burns.
There's no further discussion. I would like to make a motion to mandate universal masking and face covering policy into the, into effect.
A motion to.
To approve the.
A EBCFA.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Well, I'll second, but I would like to have some more further discussion.
Further discussion, okay. So we have a motion and a second discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Agstall.
I have to stop.
Well, I know you have, I know you have your notes, so.
Well, I have lots of, I have lots of things. We'd like to go to Ms. Plomin.
I, I struggle with the policy as it's written right now. It feels too blanket. It doesn't feel conducive to enough of the needs of this community that have been expressed. And I think the community has to understand that when you're thinking about your own child, there is another child that might live across the street from you that has a completely different need. And what is going to benefit all of us in this town is everybody's ability to think a bit outside themselves. And I think we have to create a policy that begins to model that for this community. So as it's written right now, it's a little too blank slate for me. And I would want to see things like, I mean, I would really love to see some sort of an equation from health experts that say if we have X percent of vaccination and, you know, X number of cases in this town, that equals to masking universally or masking for vaccinated or versus unvaccinated. Like I, I want us to be able to be more creative than the way that this policy is written. Does that make sense? It's going to be challenging for us to find that language. I think it's going to be more challenging clearly to find someone who is able to give us that threshold that Joe was talking about. But I, I feel like that's important and I, and I feel like a zero percent infection rate is not the threshold. It can't be, that's not the time we live in. We can't say zero percent, right? I mean, I'd love to be able to say that, but.
Mrs. Newhouse and then Mrs. Burns.
Just a thought a little about on what Melissa's adding, you know, it's almost, you know, is it a decrease of the Delta variant versus what we're seeing right now, an increase? Is it, you know, is it that we only want to see, you know, two percent of our population with COVID? I don't know what the percentage of the population is right now, but there's thirty-three and it seems to be increasing weekly because of the Delta variant. You know, I'd be, I'd be interested in hearing some of those statistics and thresholds. So, you know, we're not being held hostage in masks and hurting and delaying learning to the extent that it needs to be without masks if possible.
Thank you. Mrs. Burns.
I recognize and I can't say I disagree, but I don't think we're going to find anybody in the medical profession or in the health, Board of Health or Public Health situation who are going to give you those metrics, especially in a situation that's still in ebb and flow and they're still researching this variant. I do however, think that a good compromise would be to revisit this policy. However, we want to every four to six weeks, every two months, in order to be able to have these discussions with Dr. Curdo and Ms. Crowe to, to carry on and revisit this. Because I think we would still find, we would still find, we're not the medical experts and I don't think that medical data should be in our policy and I don't think that's what the policy per se is for, as a governance per se. But I do think, and that's why I do feel that it is necessary that we should revisit this policy every, I don't, every two months. However, the ebb and flow of what's coming out from research and the directives through the Board of Health, CDC, Dr. Curdo's input, that's why I, I think that we could kind of compromise that, we can revisit that to see if we need to continue it or if we can do away with it or even refine it, you know what I mean? If we can step back from it, optional mask wearing or something like that. But I, I would, I would rather see something of, of that sort being placed as a placeholder for us as this progresses or regresses, I'm hoping regress, as opposed to actually seeing data that I don't think any, we're not going to be able to get from anybody.
Thank you. Dr. Curdo and Doreen, do you agree that it would be difficult for us to add any sort of metric to this policy?
I would agree with that.
Yes, I, I would most definitely agree with that. I don't know how we could be specific on certain metrics at this point.
Thank you.
I just worry though that we're, you know, I worry that decision around, okay, so the CDC references that we should, is that the CDC urges us to layer mitigation strategies, quote, when community rates are moderate to high. But my question is, how are we operationally defining what moderate to high is? And I just don't want us to be making decisions based on emotion, you know, like fear. Like I, I just, I think that fear and anxiety in my work on a daily basis is a pandemic. And I, I don't think that it's good modeling for our children to be making decisions from a fear-based place. I would love to be able to operationally define this and, and I am struggling to understand why that is difficult. You know, like I, help me, I guess, Dr. Curdo and, and Mrs. Crowe to understand, you know, can, can we, we can't even sort of operationalize like a percent decrease in positivity rates in this town? I, I don't know. I'm, I guess I'm struggling to understand why it's so difficult to put a metric on it. Or is it that no one wants that responsibility? Sorry, I'm just going to say it.
I, I would say it has more to do, I mean, there's an entire field of medicine epidemiology where all they do is just study metrics and figure out like what metrics means what. And I am definitely no epidemiologist. The epidemiologists work within the public health realm. And so they, they would be the best equipped to sort of make that decision. Kind of like if, if, you know, someone had a cardiac question for me and I couldn't answer it, I would send them to a cardiologist to be able to, to figure it out. We go to the experts. So that's why it certainly would not be within, you know, my realm to try and pick the metric of, oh, it's, you know, the positivity rate. You know, that seems to be the one that they all seem to be quoting over and over again, or the positivity rate. But, you know, I would leave it up to the epidemiologists and the public health.
Mrs. Newhouse.
Just a thought, sorry, I'm going a little backwards here on what Ms. Bryson asked earlier. For the younger students and the teachers who are teaching the younger students to be able to start to read when it's really critical to build on those foundations, would it be possible to provide those teachers and even those students with the clear face shield rather than masks? Is that something the school, like us as a school committee could look into purchasing for all these younger grades? That where it is so important to see the formation and to be able to see the faces? Is that an option?
Could be, and we can certainly explore that. I think if we had some applications of that last year.
We have purchased some mobile desk screens already. Just looking right now, probably a second to find it, but I know we purchased some clear, clear masks. We've already purchased some that are out there, almost seventeen hundred of those. So we do have some.
And I think this has been implied by some of us, although I haven't said it. I'm, I'm a little bit on the fence with students who have been vaccinated. I'm not on the fence with students who have not been vaccinated. I don't know how others feel, but I'm thinking of this in terms of sort of the middle and high schoolers who, who have been vaccinated. I'm not thinking in terms of, of children who aren't eligible yet. So that's, that's how my, that's my point. So when I'm thinking about the teaching of reading, I am thinking, what are, so it's not necessarily this policy, but what are we doing in terms of making sure we're not just having children masked all day where they're not getting what they need in literacy and math? But, so I don't know. So that's sort of where, where I'm at a little bit with, with this policy.
I'm thinking in some of the same ways. I think for now that for the younger grades, for the K through six unvaccinated, I think that we need to start with universal masking, although I'm amenable to some of these ideas that we've been trying to think about. But as far as like the general, the general policy is. But, but I would, I would really like to see it optional for vaccinated students. I mean, I, I think, to me, the idea that, you know, everyone in this high school with, of course, you know, a few narrow exceptions is eligible to be vaccinated and yet we're requiring everyone in the building to wear masks. I just have a hard time looking at that and thinking that that sounds entirely rational. I mean, there's, there's, there's something to be said about having uniform policies, but for the district. But I, I think that where we, the trade, to me, the trade offs kind of tilt in a different, in a different direction for that. And certainly that's something that, you know, people can still make, make some decisions about. Obviously, everyone is welcome to continue to do that if they wish. But I really have, you know, I don't know, to me, maybe I, maybe I have too much of this vaccination bug in me that just like, that this is, you know, getting our people vaccinated, again, that was kind of the promise, that it's like you get your, you get your vaccination and then, and again, the data shows this, that like the problems that we're having is, you know, is generally a problem with the unvaccinated. Like you look in the data and the horrible surges in the southern states and it is a pandemic of unvaccinated people. And, and again, just encouragement, incentives, reasons for people to get vaccinated and rewards for doing so is kind of what they were, what they were promised and what I think that we, you know, should be aiming, aiming towards.
Mrs. Burns.
So in, in a perfect world, I would absolutely a hundred percent agree. My, my concern is, and, and forgive me if, if this is more getting into the minutia. It's this, the optional wear, besides the points that Mr. Dr. Curdo pointed out, I'd be afraid about the, the separation of those wearing masks against those who haven't worn masks, who aren't wearing masks and that identity, I think the school community is one of collaboration and coming together as one. And anything that makes others different from the other, another, especially with the, you know, the viewpoints that we know of with families, I think has the potential of being impactful to the student learning and the student community and socially, emotionally, mentally, and educationally. And, and that would be probably the, the main caveat to, that I would, would say would be a con of vaccinated that can go without, unvaccinated with mask. I, I just, I think there would be a separation within the students themselves as a school community. You know, that would be a huge concern of mine.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Penneley.
So I've been just kind of listening and taking it all and then trying to make sense of the whole thing. And we, you know, we, we had no choice in this last year. I mean, this was a, the state mandate and the, one of the words that Mr. Agstall used a ways back that really stuck with me was reluctance, right? Like I sit here and I think of it in terms of, I want school to open and stay open without interruptions. And I, while I don't love the idea of this, I am sort of reluctantly encouraged to support the idea based on the input from the medical professionals. But what really is, is the troubling part for me is this lack of an endpoint, right? And I know we've talked about it and I know we don't have the answer for it, but just putting in this policy without an end in sight is, is, that's what I'm struggling with. So I, I mean, I know we've talked about it. I know we don't have an answer for it, but it, you know, we need to keep this at the front and revisit this regularly because if not, I mean, I'm, at this point, I'm, I'm repeating things everybody else has said, but I just, for me right now, my priority is getting everybody back in school. And, you know, if that means getting them in school with this policy and revisiting it in the middle of September, you know, a month from now and, and looking at it then, but I don't know, I'm, I'm reluctant to say the least.
Just a couple of comments, if I, I may. First off, hearing the conversation tonight, I, it is with apology that in the presentation I didn't, I wasn't more specific in terms of seeing this as something essential to make a decision on for you as a committee to allow us to start the school year. We can all, I certainly understand that everyone is anxious. There are communities all around us who are having the same conversation, as I think everyone is quite aware. And time is ticking for us to get ready for the opening of school. The, the language in my memo or the accompanying materials did not point out that this is a, I think, and I would recommend, you know, something that at least allows us to get started, but then we figure out some sort of point in time in which to review and circle around where it is to the comments that have been shared, where it is that we can, when it is we can, and how it is that I, as your superintendent, can make that decision to support you with the medical advice. Let me also say as a parent, I absolutely hate this. When, when the decision from DESI at the end of May came down, collectively, there was a sigh of relief to say we are on course to open and resume under normal conditions. And then things have obviously changed as they have over the last six to eight weeks. I do not, as a parent of two children in, in school, in K to twelve school system, look forward to them returning to school. I do not look forward to making, I did not look forward to making this recommendation to you. But it's taking the lead of the medical professionals and that's the best that I can do to recommend to you what it is that they've recommended ultimately to me. And this is a tough decision that I know that you have to make and you are balancing all of the many, many things and thoughts that you've articulated here tonight. So it's unfortunate, I know, and it's, I think it's unfortunate that you, as a committee and the committees across the Commonwealth have been put in this position. I think that that is terribly wrong and it should not be the case, but it is. But certainly if you as a committee can come to some recommendation or if you wish for me to come back to you with some recommendation, but when it is that you review a policy, if you opt to continue it, I'm very happy to do so. That is essential. I, I don't know in this moment what that would look like or how that would. Uh, I, I don't know in this moment what that would look like or how that would sound, but certainly I recognize if you opt to continue with this policy, that that would be important to do.
Hearing what Dr. Brand decided to say, and I mean, as a parent, I have a lot of reservations with this. Um, but thinking about the entire school community, you know, we're definitely, we're not the medical professionals. Every medical professional in town is recommending that we do the universal masking. Um, and we're seeing the Delta variant increase. We're seeing increases in cases even in town right now. I feel like we'd be setting ourselves up to not be able to open up full time with every student back in the building if we didn't, and be able to give Dr. Brand and his team the ability to move forward from tonight. Um, if we didn't give them some kind of direction. And with everything increasing and changing right now, as much as I would hate this, I think, um, the safest decision for me would be to say, let's go with universal masking and see how it hap, see how it works. And let's readdress this at our meeting in middle of September when everyone's been back to school for two weeks. And see where we stand, see where the town stands with COVID cases. Um, you know, are we still increasing? Has it leveled out? You know, and obviously, if things change between now and our meeting in the middle of September, we can have call a quicker meeting, we can pull it up into one of our meetings at the end of this month. But I think we need to give, you know, listening to Dr. Brand, we need to make a decision tonight so we can open the schools to the best of our ability, the safest way, so we can get these kids back into school and give them the education that they need. That's just my, my thoughts at this, after listening to Dr. Brand there. And, you know, every medical professional in town is telling us that they recommend the universal masking. And not being a medical professional, I feel like who am I to question their, their recommendations at this point?
Thank you. Any other comments or questions or discussion?
I just want to clarify one more thing, Jo, that you were just saying around all of the medical professionals are making this recommendation. And I, I thank you, Dr. Brand, for acknowledging the task that has been put in the laps of school committees around the nation and hoping that people can recognize that and the challenge that has been placed on school committees to make a decision like this. But not only were medical professionals making this recommendation to this committee, um, but our emergency management committee, which also consists of our fire department, our police department, all of the people on that emergency management team, which is my understanding, made this recommendation. Um, and what is frustrating, I'll air that, is that the decision will be placed on school committee, and yet the recommendations are coming from all of these sources. I just hope that people listening, people watching, understand the challenge that lies before us with this. And
Leave it up to the parents.
Can recognize that challenge. So.
Leave it up to the parents. It's that simple. Leave it up to the parents. They know what's best for their child. You're not their parents. You can make decisions for your own child. Let us make decisions for our child.
Please no, please no, no, please no comments from the audience.
Listen.
Let me just say one thing.
No, please.
Why isn't Governor Baker making this decision? Why does it have to come down to you people? That's not fair to you, that's not fair to us. He had made a statement that the numbers were so low that he didn't believe he should mandate masks. So if the governor doesn't believe they should mandate masks, why should you? Really? That's the governor.
We ask, please.
No, that's a statement, I'd like to be heard too. You people are all going around and discussing everything. I have a feeling myself, I have grandchildren that have health issues, that masks are difficult for them to wear. Parents should have a say in this.
We're gonna take five minutes, we're gonna take a five-minute recess, it's nine, seventeen. We'll take five minutes. Is that, oh, a motion? Thank you. All right, thank you so much. All right, so we are back. We are looking at EBCFA, which is the Face Coverings Policy. There is a motion and a second on the floor. Um, as I'm thinking through this before we take the vote, there is also an option to bring this back to the policy subcommittee early next week and provide you with an alternate policy on Wednesday at our next meeting. This is, I don't know exactly what the policy subcommittee will provide as an alternative, but that is, that is an option, um, which is what we would need to do, but knowing that this is delaying, um, our, our, not our opening, but making it a little bit difficult to, to really begin the reopening of our schools. Okay, so I'll just put that out there. Any other, anything else you'd like to add or share?
I have, I have no problem, um, having the policy committee revisit it. I, I would be interested in what, like, what kind of ideas, rudimentary as they may be, that, that could be considered. I'm just, just as a, just as a pathway, that's, that's all I'm asking. Because I have no, I'm, it's not, it's not optimal. I mean, but it's, you know, I ju, I'm one of, I'm one, I just think it's necessary at this juncture, but I, I'd be interested in any, you know, viable ideas.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or thoughts on that?
All right, let me think, the other main, the other main option would be to follow the DPH, Desi recommendations.
Can you be more specific?
Uh, requiring, uh, grades K through six and unvaccinated staff and, uh, students, um, to wear masks, but unvaccinated, rather, vaccinated students and staff in grade seven and above are, are not required to.
If we can take a vote on this tonight, that would mean the policy that we voted in last year is still in effect, which means that it's universal masking across the board still.
Technically, right, because that lasts until we change it.
But I, how about things though too, is that we can vote on this tonight, it can always be revisited and revised. It's not an end-all be-all per se, but it'll allow the administration to get ready for the beginning of school. And because I don't think this is something we should rush into, um, but I think it's something I very much open, if we can be more flexible, but I think we, we need to give the administration the ability to start preparing for the first day of school. And as we look at this policy and perhaps revise it, um, you know, and revisit it, that's, that would be another suggestion. I'm not, you know, we, we just need to give the administration some place to start.
Thank you. Mr. Finley?
Well, and just thinking, sort of, logistically, if we did bring it back, I mean, I don't, I don't have an objection to the policy subcommittee looking at it anyways, but if we did, isn't it then a first reading and a second reading? Like, aren't we kind of drawing out the process further than we maybe should?
Well, except technically, this is the first reading, I mean.
But if we change it?
We would, but we could still adopt it.
I guess we'd still technically go back, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we could still adopt it after the first reading.
Right.
So we would, we could adopt it after this first reading, which essentially is the same as our current policy.
Right, so no, I mean, nothing is.
So adopting it doesn't really achieve anything. Technically.
Unless you want to incorporate a modification around some of the, uh, things that you've been talking about tonight, about revisiting and or so on.
But what we are just deliberating tonight is actually, is a revision to the policy from last year. It's, it's the MASC revision, slightly revised policy.
Right, right, but there are no significant changes.
That's right.
So, I mean, I would, I would be comfortable as part of that policy subcommittee digging in just a bit to see if there was just some, few things we could add, even the piece about revisiting this. As numbers change, I mean, I don't, I mean, I, I think that it's worth maybe taking a look at and thinking of this almost as our first read. Um, I don't feel comfortable revising any of this on the fly, especially since it's been provided to us from medical professionals. I don't feel like it's my place to do that, so, but I would be comfortable bringing it to the subcommittee to work alongside Dr. Cudo and Ms. Crowe to say, okay, are there pieces here that we might be able to think through a little bit more deeply than just accepting this as a, as a blanket?
I like those thoughts, but I also know according to Dr. Brand's message earlier is that there's a big meeting on Wednesday, so how can we get administrators and teachers working to open school while we're working on this and give them clear guidance until we decide what we want to do? I think we gotta, you know, start with somewhere.
It seems to me that we're not prepared to adopt a new policy. We don't have a revised policy in front of us. I think we're not entirely clear on what we might want that to contain. But I think we need to make a decision tonight so that school can proceed with an expectation of at least what the opening is going to be. And if we're not ready to make a different decision now, then essentially, I mean, which is essentially the same thing, we either make no decision tonight, because then the policy continues, or we adopt this motion in front of us, which is again, basically the same thing, and then we begin whatever additional work we think we need. But there needs to be something tonight that the administration can take going forward and give to the community of this is what it's going to look like at least now as school begins.
I agree.
And I don't think that we can take our, take a policy back to the policy subcommittee and come back later uh, with something potentially different from what the expectation is or from what people need to know what to expect. Absolutely.
No, I agree. Okay, um, all right, so we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor? That's one. All opposed. Abstentions? Okay, well, that was a long time for that, but, all right, um, so I, I So I say we bring this to the, to the policy committee on Monday, or before. What is today, Wednesday? Monday, today is Monday. Oh, so we can dig into it this week. I keep thinking it's Wednesday.
So question on that, though. So now our old policy is still in place, so basically, universal masking is still in place for everybody.
With the possibility of us revising it. Right. Which was not done in this, right. But I think it's not easy to, we, since this is going back to the policy subcommittee, I think we would need to wait before sending any messaging out that the school, we didn't vote to keep the old poli, the old policy exists and that's what it is, but I still think we need to bring this back to the policy subcommittee. Clearly, we're not comfortable with it as written, so.
Okay, so I guess I'm misunderstood, because then I think we're doing a disservice to our students at this point because we're not giving the administration a clear path to start their planning, to, not that they're just starting this plan, but we need to have this in place so they can plan and open school in two weeks.
This is, this is also going to impact in capital, because this is a bargotable item with our union.
Right, well, it just, so it didn't pass. I mean, there's nothing I can do to change that outcome.
No, but I guess, but it's status quo, though. It, because it's still, the previous policy is still in effect until we, we as a board rescind it completely, rescind it or and modify it.
So does, can administration take the lead that they're planning as though universal masking's in place and make those plans?
I suppose for this week they can, but I don't know what will happen when we revise this one and bring it back. I don't know what will change because the policy subcommittee hasn't, hasn't met on this. Does that make sense? So, so the subcommittee will meet this week, provide something, bring it to you, call another meeting as soon as possible, I mean, as soon as we have it, as long as we give the notice to, to Town Hall?
Well, I don't, I mean, I don't know that our goal should be to call a meeting as soon as possible because the, I think the whole idea of leaving the policy in place right now is that there needs to be some kind of stability for some period of time. As school opens, we can't, I mean, we can't be changing the policy like the week after school begins. If we're going to, if we're going to reconsider this at some point, and that's something we had talked about doing anyway, that we wanted to keep close tabs on this, but I don't think that we can say that we're going to have universal masking, but then rush together a subcommittee meeting and try to get another full committee meeting where we're then going to change the policy.
Okay.
I have a question about the subcommittee process as well. Obviously, you'll be factoring in all of this discussion this evening in sort of proposing some language in there, some revision, but is there further discussion from the whole committee around what that might include or no? Is that subcommittee tasked with that?
I mean, the subcommittee is tasked with that, but it doesn't, anyone can write to us and share language and say, can you please include this, so?
It helps if the subcommittee knows something of the will of the larger committee because it has to ultimately
Right.
Be passed by the committee as a whole.
Yeah, so I mean, it's totally appropriate to send language to us as, as soon as possible.
If I may, just to clarify, because there are two different paths here, I think I heard in terms of, our current policy remains in place, that you voted into an existence last September, but I also have heard some suggestion around the possibility of following the DESI guidance, and they are obviously two very distinct tracks that are quite different. The administration can certainly plan for both, but they are different. And so I understand that there's more that sounds like the will of the committee is interested in possibly in terms of possible revisions or updates to the policy. But I just want to be clear that it sounds to me like it is possible that there's a change in this poli, a substantive change in the policy from what it currently exists right now.
I think that's accurate. I mean, my takeaway tonight is that one of the alternative policies would include optional masking for vaccinated students. Am I right? That that's the pulse here?
That's what I imagine a revised policy would include.
Optional? I'm sorry.
For vaccinated students. But I'm not sure all of us agree on that.
I, I'm not, absolutely not in agreement with what I know, what I see. Vaccinated people can spread it as well and still be asymptomatic and not, you know what I mean? This is just what I'm getting in my, and this has been the most difficult time as a school committee member because I, it's tough to wear two hats. And I see what's coming down the pipeline and one of the leading hospitals doing the research, and granted, I got to tell you, there's still so much more that they're trying to learn. I'm, I am just afraid for the, for the health and wellbeings of other students and our staff. I, believe me, I have no problem, I want to embrace that, I want to embrace it, but I just think it's a, I really truly think in what I've seen, it's a health risk. And I think it's, it's going to, it's going to increase the risk of school closures and classroom closures, and without having a plan in place for that yet. You know, if a classroom does have to go quarantine, you know, will that teacher go remote with that classroom? You know what I mean? That, 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 we've been through so much in the last year, we've got to learn and prepare for the things of that nature, which I'm not confident that we are there yet, and because it is a topsy-turvy situation. I don't, I, I think it, it increases the risk of school closures and classroom closures, and I think that inconsistency that we are trying to avoid and equity of education, it increases the inability for us to provide equitable education to the best of our ability. I think we can do better being with the schools open and, and students in the classroom. I think we have a better, better ability to offer equitable education. No, is it perfect? No. You know, we're not in a perfect situation or an ideal situation or post-pandemic situation at this time. That's my biggest concern. Sorry, little emotional, but it's, I just, I just, I worry about the kids. Excuse me? Excuse me?
All right, so I think we actually are, there's nothing more to discuss at this moment, so I think what we'll do is I will pull that subcommittee together, we'll see what comes of it. As of now, the policy that we adopted last year is in existence, and then we'll see how the next few days unfold and see if there's something to bring back next week, and if there's not, then we begin with the policy from last year. So I think there's just, unless there's more discussion, there's just one final motion, I believe. I'm assuming there's no correspondence.
I move to adjourn.
No correspondence this evening.
You move to adjourn, is there a second?
Yes, I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Fenely. All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you and good night.